We'll begin the monthly meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners for our consent agenda for Monday, October 17, 2022, 6:00. We will be skipping down, if there is no objections, down to the presentation by the Clinton Utilities Board, and that will be presented by Mr. Greg Fay. Trey, you have the floor, or Mayor Frank, you have the floor.
Well, I just was going to give a little background to why the presentation today. So, a while back, Mr. Fay had shared with me a slideshow presentation that I thought would be very beneficial for the commissioners. And I guess that's been maybe over a year or so ago. And then, when all the storms came through and we saw the lines down, it kind of brought electricity and its importance to the public's, I guess, front of the agenda, if you will. And so, I reached out to Greg and said, hey, this would be a good time, you know, would you be interested? And he was more than willing, happy to present in front of commission. We did have to negotiate. He said he had enough information for a three-day retreat. I said that was not possible. So, we negotiated that down to, hopefully, 15 minutes. So.
Thank you, Mayor. You negotiated it down. I don't think I've signed anything. Mr. Jaeger can help. If there's nothing signed, it didn't happen. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. And Vice Chair and Mayor, thank you so much, and County Commission. It's a great opportunity. I brought two of my cohorts with me, Director of Engineering and Operations, and also, my Director of Water and Sewer, and I have my wife in the back in case there's a problem with meanness. She is going to be the mean police. So, I'm well represented here. I'll get right to it because I appreciate your time. So, what's going on at Clinton Utilities Board? I'd like to share with you some data, some facts, statistics, and some comparisons. And if we have time, I can get into a little of economic development and TVA and what we're doing there and how we're going to move forward, which includes Bull Run. Mr. Chairman, if I go long, just raise your hand, and I will stop in mid-sentence. Mr. Allen's already told me, I'm going to kick you if you go too long. So, I'll be, I'll be as quick as I can. The, I'm sorry, I moved too fast. For our electric department, we see that we serve about 30,000 customers, a little over 30,000, $105 million in assets, $83 million a year in revenue. We have 12 electric substations. And what some people don't understand, Clinton Utilities Board serves in parts of six counties: Anderson, Morgan, Campbell, Roan, Knox, and Union. For our water department, we have 6,500 customers, much smaller, 4,800 in sewer, and we expanded outside of the municipal city limits when we took over First Utility District. And that brought us some of the water and sewer customers in the Claxton area. What everybody wants, everybody wants high reliability. Commissioner White, good to see you. Low rates and great service, the three pillars of what we try to do. And this is what I want to address. The first thing I'm going to address is low rates. Lower utility bills. My utility bill is too high. How can it be lower? And what are you doing to keep it low? Well, we're doing a lot, and I'm going to start with electric. In electric, we, we are one of 153 local power companies. We're at the end of that arrow that you see up there. They're in seven states, and we're one of the 153 that distribute power that's generated by TVA. Our wholesale rate is based on, our base rate is the same for every one of the 153. So, what TVA sells us, the base rate, everybody pays the same. Now, what's, what makes up that is a lot more than the base rate. There's a grid access charge, a fuel cost adjustment, a partnership credit, a hydro adjustment, a demand charge, and, and I tried to say that that's complicated. But I'm going to try to keep it on a higher level, simple unless you want it, and that's going to get to the three-day retreat. So, the wholesale power cost may be the same on the base, but the distribution cost is different for every local power company. The other 153, it's all different. A lot of that's based on the number of customers per mile, line loss, virtual power plant, maintenance costs, debt, whether they can, they have advanced metering infrastructure, and whether or not they can utilize time-of-use spilling. I'll show you how that plays into what we're doing. We have a smart grid, one of the very few that has a smart grid. We're progressive, cutting-edge, forward-thinking, and innovative. We've demonstrated that. For CUB, and what we were, are the first local power company in all of the seven states, the first to design and create and implement a virtual power plant that incorporated dynamic voltage regulation, demand partnership program, and direct line control. Now, I don't want to bore you with that, so I'm going to try to quickly show you at least what one of those things makes a difference on. Because of what we did with dynamic voltage regulation, we won an award for that because we were the first in the valley to do that. And that was a $3.3 million award. That helped us build that operations center that you see out there. So, that was a $3.3 million award and a thank you from TVA, and that we have shared with all the other utilities to try to help them do that also. We were the first utility in the valley to integrate our virtual power plant with TVA's power grid. And what that means is we've got dispatchable demand response that they can use to shave their peak. And I'll show you what shaving peak means in just a minute. If you've got a question, holler at me, or if not, this train is going to keep moving, okay? But I'll stop if you go, hey, you, I'll stop. So, we were recognized now, we're 10 years in, we were just recognized. TVA came out to our board, that's our board right there, for the operational excellence that we have, and for, and for TVA, for CUB's providing TVA with this dispatchable demand response. Of the financial impact on this one leg of the virtual power plant, which is this dynamic voltage regulation, what that means to us is the difference between our ability to regulate peak and non-regulate peak. And now, what that means is, I've got it clearly for, this is June of this last year, because we can shave and regulate peak, which other utilities, everyone in this room doesn't have a utility that provides this. KUB can't do it, Nashville can't do it, Memphis can't do it, Knoxville can't do it, Oak Ridge can't do it, you know, Fala can't do it, all that you can name, they can't do this, they regulate peak. We saved our, our, every customer that we have in all six counties that we serve, we saved them $69,495 for the month of June alone because of our ability to shave peak. Now, we have to pay $11.30 per kilowatt, and the shaving peak means that for every kilowatt that we reduce, we save 11.30. We reduced in June 6,150 kilowatts, we saved 69,000. A kilowatt is made up of a kilowatt hour, and if you turn 10 100-watt light bulbs on for an hour, that's one kilowatt hour. And, and what we charge you for that is 10 cents. What we have to pay TVA for that in peak is 7 cents for the energy and $11.30 for the demand charge with the peak charge. So, you can see, we need to reduce that, and we have reduced that, and we save our customers every month on that. Now, over time, since they started charging for demand, which was 2011, our customers, CUB customers, has saved $8,218,635. That's a lot of money over time, and that's used, obviously, to keep rates low. All of the power plant that we have, the three legs of it, has saved over $10,700,000, which again, is used to keep power costs low. In addition to our virtual power plant, we have line loss. Now, the government, the EIA, the Energy Information Administration, says that the average across the country for line loss is 5%, which we agree with, that's, that's right. CUB's line loss is 3.4%. That's not done by accident. Oak Ridge is 5, 4.59, Lefalit is 5.81, Harriman is 6.55, to give you a comparison. If we paid the same line loss as Harriman, we'd pay one, about $1.9 million more in power cost, $1.4 million more if we paid the same.
Is your favor on calls as line loss?
There's a lot to that. It's capacitors, it's the size of conductor, it's the distance from point A to point B, it's, it's in the transformer. We do calculations on every transformer we buy to determine the life of that transformer and the line loss that's associated with that. So, we value then, what do we pay in upfront for that, and what is the gain over time to do that? And that's one of the ways we keep our line loss down. And that, for every percent of reduction in line loss, is $600,000 to our ratepayers. So, at 3.4, you can see, we're saving a substantial amount. And that, thank you, Commissioner White, that's not done by accident. That's not, oh my, isn't that good? No. So, for our smart grid, advanced metering, time of use, and each one of those is a slide presentation, which I'm not doing, by the way, but I will if you need me to, how that saves the ratepayers of CUB for on our smart grid, 10 million, 10.7 million in the virtual power plant, 15.6 million in line loss, and 8.8 million in time of use and, and this advanced metering infrastructure. That's $35 million, any way you count that on your fingers and toes. And that's what we bring to the ratepayers that others can't do for their ratepayers in these other, really, across the valley. In 2010, what we charged per KWH, 9.7 cents, which included a fuel charge of 1.1 cents. 2010, 12 years later, we charged 10.9 cents with a 3.37 cent fuel charge included in that. It's a 13% increase over those 12 years, and it's 181% increase on fuel charge. If the same, if we were paying the same pass-through fuel charge that we did in 2010, we would actually have a retail reduction in the KWH that we sell to our customers. So, we're holding those rates down. All of those things combined make a difference on what we ask and charge in retail for electric power. And water and sewer, we're doing so well in water and sewer because we compare. The East Tennessee Development District has a survey that they do every year. This is the newest one, 2021, and it, it does 32 utilities. Of the 32 utilities, the average cost, and they say 5,000 gallons is the average cost per customer. I raised two boys, and I can get an amen from my wife, we never saw $5,000 a month, 5,000 gallon usage in a month. Those boys would run those showers until they turned into prunes. So, that, the average user, they say, is 5,000 gallons. So, that's the amount that we use. Our customers pay $53.62 for that. Across the average of the 32 utilities that surveyed, it's $106.19. Lenore City is 60% more than we are, Oak Ridge is 85% more than we are, Oliver Springs is 109, ACWA is 109, Harriman's 110, Knoxville's 110, Norris is 117. I understand that they just raised their rates 25% last month. So, I don't know where that would stack up, and I don't know if these others have raised their rates. We haven't raised ours. Rocky Top is 126, and if you live on Hallsdale-Pow system, you're paying $133 for what you pay in Clinton, a $53.62. That's substantial, and it makes a difference. So, one of the factors in that is debt. The mayor alluded to this. We looked at four because I could pull this off the internet. KUB, which is the big dog in town, CUB, the City of Oak Ridge, because they're a municipal within Anderson County, and LA, and LCUB, Lenore City, because we've been tied to those, compared, I'll put it that way. The principal debt for Knoxville is $717 million for water and sewer, 27 million for Lenore City, 54 million for Oak Ridge. CUB has zero debt in water and sewer. I, I can tell you that the debt per customer, if the number of meters that they have divided by what they owe for principal alone, Lenore City's on the hook for $2,800 each individual meter. Oak Ridge for $4,000, and KUB for $8,700. What that means on your bill, for example, for 2022, the debt service for Oak Ridge is $5,212,000, 3.4 million in principal, 1.7 million in interest. So, the PNI debt service for fiscal year 2022, 5.2 million. If you take their customers, 13,232, divide that by what they owe, that's $393 per meter, or $32 per month for the customers. Now, you get back to, we're charging $53, and you try to put 32 on top of that, you can see, debt service makes a big difference. Now, they don't calculate paying their PNI by dividing it out through their customers, but I'm trying to show you, that makes a difference on what they can charge. They're not by themselves, Lenore City, I did the calculation for Lenore City, it's, it's $328 per meter, per customer, per year. And that number goes up because their PNI is going up. I didn't do KUB, because it takes a long time to calculate all that out. I can just say, hey, it's a lot more than that. It's a lot more than that. If you're on KUB system, I recommend that you move. So, low rates. Important fact is, we've been debt-free water and sewer for, since 2011. 2011, we've enjoyed no debt for water and sewer at CUB, and two rate adjustments in the past 12 years, which still puts us way at the bottom of the, of what our, our costs are in comparison. So, putting all that together, where we leverage what we do in electric and where we leverage what we do in water and sewer, we have low rates, that thing is covered, that's what people want, and I really, that's what we provide. People want great service. Well, we provide great service. We've got 24/7, you, you call 24/7, there's a live body there. If there's a major outage, we've got a, a fully automated outage management system that, that handles thousands of calls an hour. So, you're going to get something. If you call at 2 o'clock in the morning and you and your neighbor are out, you're going to talk to somebody. Yes, sir.
How does your outage compare to Oak Ridge?
You know, that is such a wonderful question. Now, I love our friends at Oak Ridge. I do, I love our friends at Oak Ridge. They're under the same constraints that these others are. We've been at this game a long time. We go back to 2005, when we put what we call smart meters, and that are calling advanced metering infrastructure, 2005, understand. They don't have that incorporated right now in their system. KUB doesn't have these advanced meters in their system. Nashville doesn't have it in their system. Memphis doesn't have, they're, they're putting it in, they're trying to get there, and that's the very first step. There's nothing that you can do unless you know when people are out, and our meters are pinging all the time. So, we know. You'll be more surprised in just a minute when I talk to you how we do this power restoration. We've got a lot of programs that we pop out there that others can't do because they don't have what they need in order to do that. This Flex Plan that we have, that's another presentation which I won't give you, but it all goes to service that we provide and our ability to provide unique services to our customers. So, high reliability, next on the list. People want their lights on. They want their lights on, no doubt about it. We've had a lot of storms. We had a storm sit on us here in Clinton, 500, over $500,000 worth of damage it did for us to restore that power. And of course, we didn't get a cent from that, $500,000 to do it. But people want high reliability. We've got that, high reliability. Those two fellows, the two good-looking ones on the left and the right, Todd Loggins and Ernie Bowles, they are the architects of what was, what we call FLIZR, Fault Location, Isolation, and Sectionalizing and Service Restoration. In that, their ability to do that, according to EPRI, we are the number-one utility in the country to be able to design and deploy, number-one in the country, I'm telling you, it's Clinton, CUB, number-one in the country to design and deploy a fault location, isolation, and sectionalizing a system. And I'll show you how that goes. You know Todd that's not doing it anymore?
We're just, there we go.
Oh, you like that? That's good. All right. What is FLIZR? It, in a sense, it quickly identifies the location of a fault and then isolates it. And I'll give you an example of what that is. I like to use the, the electric panel in your house. If you plug in a hair dryer and a curling iron and a 15-amp receptacle, it's going to trip the breaker. Ask Nancy. It's the truth. I'm just telling you, it's the truth. When that breaker trips, everything on that breaker goes out. There are, you know, your TV goes off, the lights go off, you know, things go off, more than just that receptacle. What we're able to do is we isolate, we backfeed that one way, we backfeed it the other way. So, the only thing off is that one receptacle. Essentially, what FLIZR does, it enables to backfeed that until you take the curling iron off the receptacle and you can flip that breaker back on. We designed that, we've got 47 circuits at CUB that we now are under FLIZR. Now, that make a big difference. This is 25W, Treefell on 25W. Don't get hung up with the little reds and green squares. The takeaway from this is, Treefell, because it's a double-circuit line, we've got phone on there, we've got cable TV on there, it snapped four poles. And that put out 1,455 customers out of service. In 53 seconds, without human intervention, 53 seconds, we had 1,260 back on because we tightened it up on both sides to where we only had 195. Now, the trucks had to go out and fix that to get the 195 back on, but 1,260 were back on in 53 seconds. Great service, no doubt about it. And we were so successful with that, that Phase 2 of that, we said, well, what happens if we lose power to a substation? TVA, great, and they're world-class, five nines in their service, but they do lose power. So, we designed Phase 2 to protect all 12 of our substations. If we lose power to a substation, what can we do to get power back on? Well, we didn't have to wait long because January of last year, my friends from Oak Ridge would say, oh yeah, I remember that. A truck, and I think they were pulling, you know, a Bobcat, I'm not sure, they ran off that four-lane, and they hit one of those braces on the, on that tower, and they brought that thing to the ground. The other video presentation we could do is, how do you put concrete barriers in front of things that can fall down and go boom? I'm thinking that they need to go ahead and watch that slide projection. But this brought out everybody. It brought out most of Oak Ridge, and I don't know if it, if it got the plants or not, but I know it got the hospital, and got them all, and got a lot of folks. It took out three of our substations, Coalfield, Oliver Springs, and River Sub, which is in South Clinton. 9,000 customers were out in the dark immediately. I'm going to concentrate on River Sub because that's our, that was the biggest sub, it had 5,443 customers out. We had six breakers in there, like your house, and all of those are de-energized because we got nothing coming in from TVA. That's Marlowe, Hillcrest, Laurel Road, Mariners Point, River Bend, Wolf Valley, Ridgeview, and Faust Carney. We had to give TVA 60 seconds for power restoration attempt. Is there anything you can do? Is there something that you can shake to turn that power back on? Well, this tower's laying in the road, there's nothing they can do to get that power back on, but we, we had to give them by contract 60 seconds, and we did. FLIZR's waiting for that 60 seconds, and at the 61st second, it kicked in automatically. Now, in a minute and 40 seconds after that, it saw that it could take power from our Eagle Bend sub and push it out to energize everything on breaker six. And that got parts of South Clinton, East Wolf Valley, and Faust Carney back on. 941 customers in a minute and 40 seconds. 13 seconds later, Eagle Bend sub said, well, we can energize breaker five, that's another 1,570 customers. Now, we've got 25 of the 5,000 back on. And two seconds later, out of Clinton's sub, we have all four of the remaining breakers put back on. So, in a minute and 55 seconds, all 5,443 customers were restored in power from a substation that was de-energized because it had no power coming in from TVA. A minute and 55 seconds without human intervention, all 5,443. Now, I don't know how long it took Oak Ridge to get their stuff back on. I, I'm thinking it took a while, as it would with any other utility, as it would with KUB, Nashville, Memphis, all of these utilities. They, they would do the same things, you've got to send trucks out, and that's a minimum of hours, there's no question about that, minute and 45 seconds. So, what does that mean in terms of, other than we, hey, we've got our lights back on? There's a national indices. It's a reliability indices, it's called SAFI and SADI, and it measures the frequency of outage, and it measures the duration. How long are you out, and how often are you out? We've dropped that by 68% on the, on the frequency, by 71% on the duration of, of how long you're out. That's 730 sustained customer outages avoided, and 1.2 million customer hours without power saved. That speaks to reliability of service. So, low rates, great service, and high reliability, that's what they want, that's what we deliver. I've got a, another message on economic development, if you want me to take another minute, but if the mayor throws something, somebody has to intercept that.
You've got three minutes.
Three minutes is great, and I think I can do it. I chair the Board of ACITA, Anderson County. I chair the Board of ETEDA, that's 13 counties. I've been chairman since its inception of the committee through TVPPA and TVA. We brought investment credit, security deposit coverage, performance grants, some of the things we've negotiated with TVA. It makes for a big difference. For residential development, we are, we do great. In order to entice people to, to build on our system, one of the things for water and sewer taps they look at, and again, according to the survey, $3,200 is the average, we charge zero for that. Where we compare with Lenore City, which is what we have been comparing, we were happy to have several collaborative meetings with local developers and other interested citizens to clarify and correct erroneous information and identify advantages for residential development in the Clinton area. What it costs to build per lot in Lenore City, $3,335 per lot, which you have to pay in advance. What it costs at CUB is $400. That is an enticement to build in Clinton. So, we have a long-term partnership with TVA. We were able to negotiate a contract with them. That has saved, and we've got letters of appreciation, which I appreciate, that's their board, that's their new CEO. We've saved $3,732,000 because we get a 3% credit on that. Not every utility has signed that, but every utility that hasn't signed that has cost their ratepayers millions of dollars. And finally, going forward, and this is, now I'm down to the last 30 seconds, Bull Run, we've got next, next year shutting down. We're in negotiations. The same people that I've negotiated with TVA for 20 years, Tom Bradley is, is one. We want to preserve that as an industrial park and also a community park. We're working with them in order to do that. Fuel cost adjustment, which is, we want smoothing, it's killing us. What the fuel cost adjustment was in, in August killed our customers. Solar energy, you saw the scam on WATE. There's so many people are getting scammed with that. And electric cars, how are we going to deal with the infrastructure for that and the charging stations? And that, my friend, at the speed of life, is all I have. And I can answer questions on this, politics or romance, whichever you, ever you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Fay?
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate your time. Good job. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation honoring Pat Postma Day by Commissioner Jaeger. Or Commissioner, that Commissioner Jaeger.
Hey, Bob, why don't you come down with me?
Bob has known Pat Postma for a lot longer than I have, so I thought I'd invite him down as well. Can we move, yeah, thanks.
All right. Well, it's my pleasure to, to read this proclamation for Pat Postma, as she's Bob Smallridge and my constituent, as well as longtime friend to the Smallridges. So, whereas, while growing up in Oak Ridge, where she was first kindergarten class at Elm Grove Elementary School, Pat Postma later be- Elm Grove Elementary School, Pat Postma later became, began her working career as a clerk at a local department store. Later, while at Duke University, she worked as a dorm receptionist, library assistant, and faculty dining room waiter. And she spent the summer working at Y-12 Technical Library, where she met her future husband Herman, a physicist who later became Director of Oak Ridge National Laboratory. Hey, Pat, what's the name of, the name of that bridge you cross when you, when you leave?
I beg your pardon?
What's the name of the bridge that you cross when you leave Oak Ridge?
Well, it's Herman Postma, Solway Bridge.
Is that right? I didn't know that.
The Solway name is still there.
Pat graduated from Oak Ridge High School and Duke University, and she holds a PhD in Regional Economics from the University of Tennessee. And whereas in the early 1960s, Pat became a computer assistant at Oak Ridge National Lab, then spent several years raising her and Herman's two children, Peter and Pamela. In the early 1970s, Pat had returned to Oak Ridge National Lab as a research assistant on urban studies, followed by her return to graduate studies. By 1979, she became Research Assistant Professor in the Center for Business and Economic Development at UT. Whereas between 1983 and 1992, Pat was an active member and president of a group of six Tennesseans who established Tennessee Valley Ventures to develop Tennessee-focused venture capital funds. And she worked as an independent consultant in assisting early-stage businesses with strategic planning, market analysis, and funding through new venture consulting. Then from 1986 to 2003, Pat worked for UT's College of Business as an Assistant Director, Director of the Executive MBA Programs, and ultimately Assistant Dean for the College of Business Administration. And whereas in her spare time, if she had any, Pat was always found ways to give back to her community, including serving as President of the Oak Ridge Community Arts Center, on the Board of Directors for the Oak Ridge Public Schools Education Foundation, fundraising, Chair and Member of the Design Committee for the Renovation of Oak Ridge High School, Board of Directors for the East Tennessee Foundation, a Member of the Flatwater Storytelling Festival as the Executive Committee, and a Member of both the Oak Ridge Breakfast Rotary Club and the Camera Club of Oak Ridge. Pat always seems to find ways to give back and make lasting impact on the lives of fellow citizens. She enjoys traveling and has visited more than 65 countries. Now therefore, we, Anderson County Mayor Terry France, France.
That's where I just was.
That's right, yeah. And Members of the Board of Anderson County Commissioners, in conjunction with the Aid to distressed Families of Appalachian Counties, or ADFAQ. We do officially proclaim Saturday, November 5th, 2022, as Pat Postma Day in Anderson County, and join ADFAQ in honoring Pat as the 2022 recipient of the prestigious Bill Wilcox Bowtie Award for leading a life of purposeful impact and her selfless service to the community and a better tomorrow. We have here unto set our hands and cause the official seal of Anderson County to be on this day, 17th of October, 2022. Pat Postma. It's Pat Postma Day.
There are things on that page that I've forgotten all about. But thank you for the recognition. It is a good thing to recognize people, but let me say that I do what I do for the same reason you do, which is to make this a better place to live, a place where we all work together and come together to accomplish things. And I thank you for the service you do. It's, takes a lot of hours to get ready for this meeting every month, and it takes a lot of hours to be here. So, thank you for this and thank you for the recognition. Let's all keep working.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Yeager. Next item is the presentation by Joe Fink. Mr. Fink with us tonight?
I'm here.
Ah, go ahead, sir.
I thought I was last, though. Okay. Get these out. Take one, pass it on. I have to do this. I talked with my commissioners and, and what I'm sending around to them is something that I found out when I went to Dillsborough, North Carolina. And what they're doing there is they've got a craft show or a crafts workplace where they have furnaces for glass blowing and metalwork, and they're using students from the universities and, and the high schools to do these crafts. And the neat thing about this to me is they're using methane gas from the landfill. We have a landfill here, and Knox County is keeping it full, and every time I drive from here, Knox, or from Norris into Knoxville, there's a stack out there with that methane gas being burned. It would be a great thing, after hearing all this about CUB and everybody else, if we could use that. You go into looking for landfill uses and you'll find some, there's one up in, up towards northeast anyway, I can't, I'm 80 years old, I'm lucky to figure out who I am. But they're using it for greenhouses. They're using it, they're starting to use it for possibility of power. And this is going on for a long time. Get on your internet and look around. Some of these landfills, the methane gas will last 30 to 40 years. And that's what we're looking at, at the one going up here on 75 towards Knoxville. What I'm trying to do is give you this, because while I was there, they were making glass objects, and the glass objects were beautiful. Each one of these is independent, there's no two alike. This one here is a Christmas decoration you'll never forget. You're welcome to take a look at them. They're original. What I was trying to get this county commission to do is look into, you have to look at W, was it WH is the company that runs the landfill? And I've been down the whole list from starting in Nashville, coming down to environmental agencies. Somebody will have to get ahold of them, and it doesn't want to be me, I'm done, but somebody could contact them and find out what they're going to do with this methane. For the time being, they're just blowing it out, burning it off. We could use it, CUB. Other places, or like they do here in North Carolina, they use it for a craft place for education and making objects. These things, you go to their place there in Dillsborough, if you want a little place to go and watch them make it and see the crafts, and they're original, they're beautiful. So, my thought was, if I could find somebody that would look into this and see, is there a possibility that we at Anderson County could take a shot at our landfill, using the gas from it? Because it's going to be there till I'm gone, and a lot of us others are going to be gone. And that methane, it's there. If you throw it out, it's a bad gas, but if you use it, it's okay. So, that was my, my presentation, and there was supposed to be something about a, you're going to run my?
I've got a couple videos, which ones would you like to play? All of them?
The third, the third one is good.
What was the name on that one? I have one that's overview glass black screen.
Just play the, the last one, it's the overview, I think. No sound.
Not on this system, I'm going to carry the audio. You could provide links to it.
Well, there's, you see one of these being made. That's the guy, Tim, who does this, and he and I got to talking about it, but you can see there's their landfill, and that's the methane coming off from the landfill. And they make, this is one of their things that they get. And if you get a chance, you want to go to a little neat little place, Dillsborough, North Carolina, they've got all kinds of little shops, you can buy junk stuff. It's, it's really kind of a neat little place. But you'll notice the young people there, there's another, a student. The thing I liked about it was students were involved, the local community was involved in making, they made knives, they made swords, they made all kinds of stuff, plant holders and so forth at this place. See, you can see they're working on that. But you've got to have the energy to run the hot places, the, what do you call it?
Furnaces.
So, this was the thing that I thought was, I came back and I got this stuff, my wife spent it fortune there. And anyway, I thought you all might be interested in, in doing something like this. You will have to explore what the landfill people want to do with that gas. Literally, they could do greenhouses, or they could make electricity out of it. But it's there and it's being burned off right now. And as best I could tell, I've been through every organization from the Nashville back, and the only people I can't get ahold of them, of is them. They just won't answer, so. Anyway, so I thought that would be interesting for you, and if you had any questions or something, I just had a good time over there and spent a lot of money. Yeah, the, the email address is, is there. His name is Tim, and he's really, he's really good as far as talking to. He'll tell you what you want to know and, you know, how they did it and so forth. He's been there 10 years, so he has some good information. Okay, can I go?
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
Okay, I'll leave this out here if you want to take a look at some of these.
Thanks, sir. There are no objections, Commissioners. We have a couple of more to add tonight. One of them we read by Commissioner Tyler Mase, and the other one by Commissioner Michael Foster. Commissioner Mase.
Commissioner Vow. Come on down. His family.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're here to recognize and celebrate the end of what I would call a, an era and a legacy in Anderson County law enforcement, particularly at the jail, honoring Captain Shane Vow for his years of service. Resolution number 22-10-963. Whereas it is with bittersweet emotions, we announced the retirement of one of the most well-respected deputies to ever pin on a badge for the Anderson County Sheriff's Office, Captain Shane Vow. He started his career with the Sheriff's Office in May of 1998 and quickly established himself as a valuable asset and motivated contributor to the department. And whereas with his leadership, acumen, exemplary performance, and seemingly unlimited aptitude, Captain Vow distinguished himself as a fast riser within the ranks of the Sheriff's Office. Those attributes earned him the coveted title of Deputy of the Year for 2002. And whereas his tireless work ethic and warming personality made him a natural selection for the Training Division, where he positively impacted the lives of many men and women in the law enforcement community. In 2006, he was promoted to Training Sergeant and assigned to the Department's Training Division. He graduated from the Tennessee Corrections Institute Facility Training Officer Program with high honors. He was later recognized by the Corrections Institute as the Facility Training Officer of the Year for not only his teaching skills, but his ability to identify legal concerns and draft policies and procedures to, to address operational deficiencies. These policies were not only adopted by the Sheriff's Offices, but were shared with and adopted by multiple agencies across the state. And whereas he is a founding member of the Anderson County Drug Court, where he has worked tirelessly to address drug addition, addiction through alternative means designed to identify, treat, and rehabilitate those offenders willing to accept sobriety and lead a respectable and productive life. And whereas Captain Vow created and supervised the county sex offender registry to ensure our communities were safe by tracking convicted sex offenders and sharing this critical information with other local, state, and federal agencies, as well as the public at large. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 17th day of October of 2022, we honor our colleague Captain Shane Vow for his exemplary service to Anderson County, congratulate him on his retirement, and wish him well with his future endeavors. Whether serving as a teacher to new deputies, a source of wise counsel, or a friend of all, he has exhibited the qualities we all admire in county deputies. He has made a positive and impactful mark on the history of Anderson County Sheriff's Office by influencing many deputies that will carry on in the same fine tradition that he has always carried, that has always characterized the Anderson County Sheriff's Office. His devotion to duty and public service will continue to serve as an example for correctional officers who follow in his footsteps. We graciously thank him for his consummate professionalism and guidance in molding the future of our Sheriff's Office, and congratulate him for a job well done. May you always look back on your accomplishments with great pride and realize your legacy will remain forever in the hearts and souls of all, of all those you touched as an Anderson County Sheriff's Deputy. Be it further resolved that we hereby proclaim October 21st, 2022, as Captain Shane Vow Day in recognition of his superior service to the citizens of this great county. Resolved, duly passed, and effective this 17th day of October, 2022.
If I could take just a moment, we want to honor Captain Vow because he's always going to be a captain for us, presenting him a retired identification card and his badge. And just so everyone knows, he's not going to be gone, he'll be still working with us through the Tennessee Corrections Institute.
Want to thank you all for this, and thank my coworkers for this. When I started back in 1992.
You've got three minutes.
Pick up that gavel over there. When I started back in 1992, things were a lot different. I started at Campbell County and I grew up in the age of cop shows and movies. I thought that was being a cop. Kicking down doors, catching the bad guys. That's what I thought. And I'm sure that the sheriff in Campbell County at the time, Ron McClellan, regretted more than once giving a 19-year-old boy a badge and a gun. But thank God I had a lot of veteran officers that took the time to pull me to the side. Say, don't do it that way, Shane. Do it this way. That's the way we do it. And I respected them for that. And I grew listening to those old heads and learning that the job is more about talking to people, listening to people, trying to find a way to solve the problems that they're experiencing. Sounds a little bit like being on county commission, doesn't it? Little did I know back then. And then I started to work at Anderson County in 98, and I found that training was for And then I started working at Anderson County in 98, and I found that training was formal. They had an instructor, they had somebody that actually went over the books and taught us and built on what I already knew. And I gained a passion for training. And I wanted to learn how to take knowledge I had in my head and put it into somebody else's head. That fired me up. And I thank the Lord and Avery Johnson for giving me that opportunity to do that. And I, I loved, I forgot about some of the stuff in that. I loved getting that award, but what I like is when officers come up to me and say, "What you trained us to do has kept us from getting hurt. What you trained us to do worked." Those are the moments I live for. And then I learned that the drug problem had grown to a horrible rate. And you all know, you all have seen the devastation that drugs has done to our county. I don't have enough time tonight to tell you all the stories, but I've seen mamas standing in the front lobby of that jail and cry and say, "Shane, that boy wasn't raised that way." Seen little kids cry because we had to take their daddy back to the cell. And I've just wanted to grab them and shake them, say, "Don't you realize what you're doing? Don't you realize how much you're hurting your family and your kids?" But time after time, they'd come back to jail, time after time. I'd see them get arrested again and again and again. Time after time, it ripped my heart out. Oh, but there's been a few times that I'd see them at the store. And they'd say, "Hey, Vow." I know where they know me from, when they call me Vow. "Hey, Vow, I've been out of jail for six months." They're proud of that. "Hey, Vow, ain't done drugs in a long time, passed the drug test." "Hey, Vow, I got a job." "Hey, Vow, I got my family back." "Hey, Vow, I found the Lord." Those are far and few between compared to the bad times, but they still outweigh the bad times. And that's why I did it for 30 years. That's why you still have men and women down at that jail doing it now, today. The new job I'm taking, I want to take what I've learned here from Anderson County, and I want to spread it to every jail in East Tennessee. And that's what I'm going to try to do. I'm not leaving town, I'm just leaving the jail. Actually, I'm not even really leaving the jail, I'll be going back quite often. They're just putting somebody else in the office I used to occupy, but the time that I've spent, I've learned so much, and I want to be able to spread that around. I don't stand up here tonight getting this resolution, this proclamation with my name on it by myself. I have literally stood on the shoulders of giants over the last 30 years. And I'm proud to have served the people of this county in that capacity and want to keep on doing that. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Now that Shane's made everybody cry, I get to follow that, so. Will the chamber please come up and join me? So July night, July 19, October 19 is Support Your Local Chamber Day. And also, it is the 90th birthday for the Anderson County Chamber, so they are celebrating their 90th birthday, actually coming up on the 22nd with a big event downtown, right across the street at the Ritz. There are still tickets available for that if you'd like to, like to join in on the event. But this resolution honoring the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce, celebrating 90 years of exemplary service to the citizens of Anderson County by promoting prosperity through economic development. Whereas in 1932, a small group of prominent businessmen met in the back room of Hoskins Drugstore and formed the Clinton Business Association, with the eye towards the economic development in downtown area by addressing community needs and existing impediments to growth. And whereas early meeting agendas focused on prohibiting outdoor toilets in the downtown area and recruiting laundry businesses for the growing community. And whereas by 1936, the association was steadily growing, and the focus shifted toward developing plans for an airport, determining the feasibility of a local community hospital, and securing funds for the construction of a new school for African-American students. And whereas in 1984, the organization finally settled on the name Anderson County Chamber of Commerce to reflect a more comprehensive county-wide approach to promoting Anderson County through programs, incentives, designed to attract businesses, keep current businesses in business, and facilitating communication between businesses. And whereas presently, the membership stands over 600 area businesses representing over 25,000 employment positions. The Chamber, Chamber offers a variety of programs geared towards small business development, cultivating connections within the business community, and advancing business leadership, including highly successful programs, Leadership Anderson County, Youth Leadership Anderson County. And today, preeminent organization is recognized as one of the most successful chambers in Tennessee, with current Chamber President Rick Meredith being named the Tennessee Chamber of Commerce Executive of the Year for 2018. Now there, sorry, now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session the 17th day of October, 2022, that we honor and celebrate Anderson County Chamber of Commerce for 90 years as plenary service to our community by promoting prosperity through economic development, ensuring Anderson County will always be a great place to live, work, and play, and learn. Resolved, duly passed and effective this, the 17th day of October, 2022.
Just real quick, thank you very much. It's good to be back, it's been a couple of months since I've been before you guys. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board of Directors and everybody at the Chamber, again, thank you. I've got two of my staff members here, Jared Fogarty and Jackie Patton, Janet and Marcia could not be here with us, but thank you for your continued support, and we look forward to the next 90 years. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Resolution Number 22-10-960, an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include site plan requirements. Does anyone in the audience tonight want to speak on that particular issue? No one? All right, we will consider the public hearing closed. If there's no further business to come before us on the consent agenda, Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Vow. I just wanted to mention, we lost Deputy Joe Weaver in the last week. And a lot of you probably got to know him when he was, during the pandemic. He worked at the entrance here a lot, so I just wondered if we could have a moment of silence for him before we adjourn this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no other business, we will recess for 10 minutes and get started with a regular agenda.